How the roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How the roads, well, you know, it's snowing.
Today is Monday, December first first two thousand and twenty five. I like to call a regularly scheduled meeting on Orange Town, New Hampshire border selectmen to order at six fifty eight, five fifty eight E A. Start with the pledge of ages. And pledge of ages to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Board members present the scene.
Kathleen Keller Theater, Diana Milkwells, Claudia.
Scott McDonald, John Harrington, also present in the room with us this evening. Armin Brerfield.
Eric Anger, fire chief.
John Tangus, resident.
Peter Busantis.
Chad Pelletier, road agent.
Moving online, who is to mention now. Go to the first item, citizens' comments, like his, oh, go ahead, Armin. Armin, work.
Yes. Uh, I wanted to thank everybody that helped us to move the Rio to its new home. It's undercover, it's smiling, really happy as can be. It was an awful lot of work from dedication from all the volunteers. Uh, Chad, I couldn't have done it without Chad for sure, ditch crew. Uh, we couldn't have done it without Advance Haven. Uh, they donated all the asphalt and did all the finish work. So, uh, and then Jeff Flurry from Advance and as well as, uh, the the crew here actually made the building move over there, so. Uh, it's very exciting that it's undercover. I hope I never have to do that again. And we hope to take good care of it, so. Oh, I thank you very much for that.
I think they give the power to Chad.
We will send a letter from the board here over to Advance, sure.
Oh, that's very nice, yeah. Anybody else, Armin, that donated? Did, how about Granite State?
And Granite State last.
Yeah, they also donated.
Yeah.
So anybody else we should send a a thank you letter to?
Well, other than than the town employees or members of the historical society. Uh, that was pretty much it, Chad.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, there was no other numbers. But yeah, both the Granite State last and Advance really went way out of their way for us.
Okay.
Any other citizens' comments this evening? Hearing none, we'll go to our regular agenda. Um, Chief Lambert, you were at first.
I am at first. Um, Chief Lambert. Um, just coming to you guys tonight, um, after our vacant, which had four, I mean, it told you guys, other than the process, we need people. There are cases of commerce that have left, um, so we finally finished after um, the firing class, finally get, and so we were able to secure some of the people on there and make sure they pass, but within our area, we were much of a close, so it's good. Uh, I want premium, um, to move forward, so. I'm coming to you to ask the approval, and I have one that I, um, I brought as my, you know, form. They sign for Todd Logic, but I might find where obviously you could sign if you need, so. Um, so as, um, three people that came forward and now, um, we built us three vacancies we had, um, I would say in front that I have one right now that's um, is a participant, but is now in the department for many, many, many years, because I don't participate anymore, and he's been a senior member, um, and, uh, I'm just gonna talk about in future, keep him first to be here once I get a termination of how he's doing, um, so, um, I'll bring that forward after. Um, Charlie Watson lives in currently, um, he recently just, he's a newer, um, firefighter, just finished the class. Putting in key for a little while, um, in one of the department as a uh, on-call slash per diem firefighter, uh, one fifty. Um, Isabella Edwards, um, is living in Madbury right now, but it's, uh, depending on what department she gets on and call her again, she's looking to moving area of, um, that department, so she just graduated past two, so they keep for a while. Um, and that will be something I think will be a really good investment, is very eager to get into the fire service, um, both of them are. Um, so, and last but not least, uh, Marcus is, um, they will change form, I may, but we're gonna touch on last name. So it's, it's here also, just, uh, wish you'd sign, we bring that on the department, so. That's all I pretty much have, um, for you guys, right? And.
Since I didn't get to write everything down there. Did I have that?
Sure, that has a big, so that go with me.
There's four in here that you mentioned.
Yeah, Todd, like, it can just, it's just, you don't have to say that, it's just, they can re-sign a little there, you want, okay.
These are just, I don't have to sign, sorry.
As we move to the beginning of the year, obviously, you know, just that everybody's here, but then they decide that either they get hired full time and they move off of games, or it's all that I said before. Always kind of blow up this stuff, so. I'm actually at the Fire Academy, um, at a, uh, classroom meeting, uh, three weeks ago, and, and everybody's saying the same thing, it's a very vague, I've been following now. Per diem sold on to those people, uh, because my candidate just promoted an empty chief. They had a lieutenant retire, then they already had six openings, so. They're essentially, like, it's in a flow, they're trying to fill vacancies, so as these people become certified, firemen, it's maybe seven to go to the service, will always be a training grounds for a lot of people. Um, but you can hold on to it for a year or two, well, good for us, because it gets the search to services.
The person who was waiting to take the physical maturity test, how is that happening yet?
Uh, next week, the first test was supposed to be last Sunday, but I signed the flu and where this, uh, pretty much bedridden, so couldn't go take the test, so. Um, uh, there's four tests available in Connecticut in the next two weeks, so it is four tries to get them.
Are you looking for a motion for each one or piece?
I use, we got the same for.
Can we put them into one motion? All the names and, or you want separate?
One would be better separate, yeah.
Separate, okay. Okay, uh, I make a motion that Tyler Logic.
I'm gonna sit down.
Skip that one, okay. Uh, I make a motion that Alyssa Isabel, Isabella Edwards be hired as a per diem firefighter, E M T basic as an on-call uh, per on-call temporary uh, at an hourly rate of twenty-two dollars and ninety-one cents per hour. I'll second that.
Oh.
Kathleen nine.
Diana nine.
Laura nine.
Scott. Scott, fine. If you wanna make the motions and then just add.
Oh, Diana. Sorry, okay. The actual.
Excellent.
So I do the actual, um, I made a motion that Charlie Watson, uh, is, but be hired as a per diem firefighter, E M T basic on call at an hourly rate of twenty fifty. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Kathleen nine.
Diana nine. Laura nine.
Scott. Last one is Martha, is Martha is gonna be hired.
Yeah, Isabella.
You grow up here? Do you what? Do you grow up here?
Uh, no, we've yeah, you just wanna come up, you just wanna compare it to last, can that's.
Okay, uh, I make a motion that Marcus Jordan Haysey. All right, well. Uh, and be hired as a per diem firefighter, E M T basic on call uh, temporary at an hourly rate of twenty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. I'll second.
All in favor?
Kathleen nine.
Diana nine. Laura nine.
Yeah.
People relax in the shadow of the department, or the logics. Wow. Next up. Strong.
So I have the final two positions to present to you tonight out of the five that we were hiring. The building inspector position and the family service administrator, multi-department admin assistant. Uh, we had four applicants for each position, I interviewed uh, several of the applicants that had the qualities we were looking for. And I believe we have two good candidates that I'm presenting tonight. For the building inspector, I'm presenting Todd Fline. He's, and from Manchester, New Hampshire, comes with thirty-four years of construction, foundation business as an owner, project manager, sales manager, construction superintendent, and master tradesman. I think he'll, uh, do a good job for Allenstown. For the family administrator, family service administrator, there was also four applicants, I interviewed several of them. Uh, I'm presenting Alana Stralo, she's an Allenstown resident. Comes with the years of experience in human surface case management, office administrative management, she was a C D S W, which is sort of, sort of by social worker down in, uh, New Jersey, so she's very familiar with family service cases and the clients that might come to us for help.
Hmm, yeah.
You have those personnel action with, in your signatures.
Yeah, those who stood out beyond.
They did.
So.
On-call references on both names.
Okay.
Both came back, very, very good.
So that's.
There is a change, the two forms, and again, I'm not trying to push it off on you ladies, but I was told I needed to make fun of you when I mentioned.
Oh.
I was wondering what was going on.
That's alright. Alright. Alright, we'll make a motion for Todd Fline to be building inspector, part-time, twenty hours a week. Um, at forty dollars an hour. Start date eleven twenty-three twenty-five.
That's the start of the, um, pay period we're in.
Oh, so what would be the start date?
That, right, that's, that's, that's the start date within the pay period.
Okay.
It's easier for Veronica to sign people up in the payroll.
Okay, so no start date, so that's the legitimate start date, yeah, that's the legitimate start.
When they actually have their first day at work, I'm not sure.
Okay. Do I need to redo it, or are we?
No, that is start date.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Kathleen nine.
Diana nine. And Laura.
And Scott.
Oh, okay. I make a motion for Alana Stralo um, to be a family services administrator, multi-department administrative assistant full-time, forty hours a week, at twenty-seven dollars per hour. Start date eleven twenty-three. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Kathleen nine.
Diana nine. Laura nine.
Scott.
I was not remember. No.
Copy of the provisional amendments.
Yeah.
Currently, there's twenty. All of the estimated current past impact uh, numbers are based on the numbers that are currently sitting. If there's any changes from the budget committee further, then we'll adjust accordingly. That's not that your contingency funding here, the thing I need from you, you have suggested about and where those funds are going to come from, so those are blank current.
We cannot, we cannot, I'm, I'm assuming, come out.
The, um, auditors are, are trying to be lost.
Yeah. I would recommend that we, uh, they, we were overextended by fifty thousand, please. Oh, yeah, I would recommend that we do it for fifty thousand. Um, and it would have to be raised from taxation, this is money that does not carry forward, though, if I'm correct, so at the end of the year, if the voters approve this, which I wonder if you know, they will. If they did, this money would go back in.
To the general fund.
Okay, so.
So you have to put it in every year or somewhere.
Yeah, if they're, so I know it's a, it's a weird apartment, but the way they did theirs, it is non-lasting. Is that, we are following a very specific RSA, so I didn't know if that's a possibility, that we could leave ours at this point, even how it is, again, I don't know that it will pass. But for the future, maybe we could set up some type of, it almost seems like a capital reserve account, as opposed to contingency fund, but I don't know of the legality of that, or meaning of it.
It doesn't say non-lasting.
Yeah, when I was reading there, I was thinking it, well, maybe.
Are you talking about?
That it carries over, that theirs does not go back into the.
Unless it's, it says it's a thirty-five one C, were you looking at the RSA? Cause I'm not seeing where it says non-lasting. What's I'm missing?
Maybe I did. Oh, well, it's a non-capital reserve, reserve fund. So.
That's different, that's thirty-five one C, I'm wondering if we could do the same.
Yes, that will.
So we go into a non, I, I, I would say, sure.
Yes, so that way, at that point, it does become non-lasting.
Right, this particular
Nice nature, yes.
Uh, language comes right out of D R A, cause that's what you were looking for, but I can look into seeing if we can't set up something similar to what they did.
Okay.
Then it does go into a fund, then it doesn't.
Where it stays, and that would be, I mean.
And then it'll build.
Yeah, and hopefully, it doesn't even necessarily have to build, because if they funded it one time, there'd be no tax implication, especially if we were able to get it funded, say, next year from unassigned fund balance, and then it holds there, so if we don't need it, then we're.
We don't look back in.
Yeah, it's just, it kind of floats, and we have it as a safety net, should the day, again, where we do need it.
Okay.
Um, of course, the voters could add to it incrementally over time, especially like, if you wanted to build up, I, I don't. Last year, we were overextended by fifty thousand, but if we continue to go default over the next couple of years, I think there's a real, there's a chance, hopefully we don't, but there could be a chance, or we do infer.
Let me rework that language again. But you wanna stick with fifty?
I would say fifty thousand, because we're, we have to fund it from taxation, if we were looking at unassigned fund balance, I would absolutely say, oh, a hundred, maybe a hundred and fifty, but, or this is gonna have to be raised by taxation, I'm not too ambitious, that is gonna pass to begin with, but.
Okay, let me rework that.
At least it gets it out there, the voters will have time to study it, understand what it is, and it wasn't this year, maybe next year.
Okay. Uh, I also wanna bring your attention to article number eighteen, which was suggested by Evan Rober, Sharif Sata. It has been changed to the legislation in the way veterans' tax credits are calculated. Uh, used to be a veteran's tax credit on top of a total and permanently disabled tax credit, used to be able, or they still stack them. They're not allowing any. So if you were qualified for both, you would only get a maximum of two thousand dollars, so you'd actually lose five hundred for the veteran portion. By putting this RSA, uh, this warrant article in, by raising the current two thousand to twenty-five hundred, if you were to qualify for both, you wouldn't notice any difference, you would lose those, uh, credits.
So it basically allows our disabled banks to hold state.
Correct.
That gives our prefix in there that shouldn't be there, John. This credit is for any person who has been, this, discharged. May may.
I, um, this is the language I was given, so I'll double check that, but I didn't create it, okay.
John, you know what the motivation was for that change?
I do not.
You don't?
Hundred and fifty-five reps wants to get his or her name.
All that sense.
Then I don't think anything else will change from the last time we saw.
Correct. Well.
So. Could be like they did again, ready for the, uh, next version.
So, we'll segue right to you.
Alright, and I'll segue to Peter.
Oh, that's.
Okay.
Peter.
I've jumped over you, sure, don't.
That's not, no, that's quite right, I was gonna get, let him get.
Um, Peter Busantis, facility supervisor, um. Basically, uh, the committees meeting is gonna start meeting weekly, every Tuesday, it's the committee, um, just so we can keep things updated and moving forward, um.
Mm hmm.
Three o'clock, but we're not doing tomorrow's because of the storm.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, basically, uh, they're in there cutting concrete, cutting the, the frames out that we don't need, when we have to relocate, relocate the doors. Um, they, they expect to be done by the end of the week. And then we're gonna have the mason come in and block up the openings that we need to close in the stairwells, uh, Granite State Glass is my last um, quote coming in for doors, I've got, uh, while I have one in hand, two more coming, one from Granite State Glass, they're supposed to be in today. I have not received that yet, so. Encouraged by the discussion I had with them. Uh, they have a lot of good ideas of cost saving and reducing the cost of that, so. Okay, no, um. Harvey Lewis is almost done, the fire line and security systems, uh, there should be finished, the hard line tomorrow, and then to the test phase. We're gonna need those codes, I think, we'll be listed earlier. Um. I gotta list going of some other things, you know, electrical as we, as we get the moves and switches and stuff, but the next biggest thing after we get the concrete done is the, um, security doors. That's the next, next biggest thing, and then, uh, we're still waiting for H V A C information. Uh, we also did have, um.
Stair railings.
Stair railings, I'm supposed to call them this week, I'm kind of putting that off a little bit, because, um, we have to do some, probably some concrete grab work outside, and I wanna discuss with you about the preschool, because they, they said we needed to do work there. I kind of wanted to get all the work done at once, if we're doing concrete work, new railings and that, so I haven't come to the interior yet, I have to come back with the exit yet. Uh, it's certainly more cost efficient for us to do all at once, and that's really not, I think, higher on the list right now. Uh, but I, I do have a company that's, um, interested in their article too, Chris. Um, that's pretty much, the only other thing I have was mentioned is the cubbies, the, the demolition.
Right.
Bring that up, so basically, um, I don't know if you know, a lot of the rooms had cubbies for coats and everything, every classroom has probably five or six rooms, thirty, forty feet of that, I have somebody, we have, I've been removing some of the ones we don't need, well, we probably don't need any of them. Um, but we have to dispose of those, and they're not in greater shape, but I do have somebody that would we could donate till we take them as, that they could use, um, looking for your approvals to do that, otherwise, we have to dispose them in a dumpster or something.
Interesting, yes, I mean, it's an absolute process.
Yeah, yeah, um, the only other thing I really saw that, um, there's a couple maps that are kind of hanging in there, smaller maps of the United States and stuff like that. I don't know if I wanted to put them up and to donate them, but those probably trash too, I mean, and, and that is, I don't see anything else really that's value in there. I'm sorting all the, all the metals, so we can recycle the metal from the doors and from all the conduits that the guys have been throwing away and, and stuff, um. So. Other than that, I think we're making progress slightly, uh, Armin, Armin and I did a little bit of raking around the school, because there's a lot of leads, and it's already cut the, uh, trouble of the walkways on the way, six inch of lead, so I mean, I'm pretty, I mean, it looks good, just a little bit of work, but it hasn't been anything done in few years, um. I think we're moving on, so that's about all.
Doesn't look very good right now, but.
No, well, I, I, you know, every time I'm in there, I, I really encourage with potential of that, with that building and.
It's a construction thing, really.
Yeah.
And it's getting.
And I, and I'm, pretty much what I'm doing now is when I'm moving doors and I'm moving, um, sinks or whatever, I'm kind of using one of the rooms for a storage room, and everything's kind of going in there. And if we can salvage parts off of them and door locks and stuff like that, and hinges, I'm trying to do that. Then we're all done, maybe we'll, we'll, we'll see about disposing, but I'm really trying to um, save as much as I can at this point, I mean, it's not worth getting a dumpster in there for for three months, when we can just pile it up and do it all at once, and I've been bringing some stuff to the, to the transfer station at a little bit of time. Um, which has been helpful and some stuff like that. So I guess you'll see, I need your approval is to donate or to dispose of those cubbies as we need it, and, um, Chad is, is dropped off a truck for some of the concrete tomorrow in the next couple of days, so that'll save us about a thousand dollars off of that quote, because of the disposing of it. And that's about it.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, very interesting, me too, I have that, so at least.
Don't make no use.
Yeah, I mean.
Don't make what we're doing, that stage already playing together, I'm cool.
Yeah, exactly.
Live for pickleball players.
Yeah, I mean, we put all the base in pocket, they opened up and we'd be, I'm like, it's supposed to be great, but.
Keep working, Ben, yeah.
Yeah, I was kind of, it's a custom opening up now, but, oh, yeah. This is the act, so I actually kind of were driving a lot closer than down there, but anyway. Um, yeah, that's all I have.
Alright.
Thank you.
The only last thing is, the architect called me today, Ron Harrison, that I was giving the proposal the other day. Um, I asked him that I would vote to you into the committee to, to look at, so I don't know, we were gonna get somebody maybe tomorrow, I hadn't heard. But we, we still have to work on that, so we're still working on getting an architect to look at the building, and after the, the security doors, the bathrooms, and probably the next, that's the thing. But we may not have to do everything all at once, we can have a plan and, and, and do a little bit of time. But we may not have to do everything all at once, we can have a plan and 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 do a little bit of time.
Basically.
According to the architect, as long as we have a plan and and it's.
We're working towards it.
Yeah, we should be good, so. My goal is for the building is two things, uh get it pretty well done, so firemen can get in there in March. And we do have an uh E D C has been planning a uh townwide open house for May second. I'd really like to be at least have that building up and going, whether we're in there or not, but have that as part of the open house to kind of shore off the building. Um so that's my personal goal, I really haven't brought that up to the committee, so that's kind of like my timeline and it's good to have a an endpoint, so we can keep moving.
Thanks.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks for your.
Yeah, I did have one thing I forgot to mention, I'm actually.
Your time's over.
Uh I I know, it just popped in my brain like.
I I relinquished my time to.
So um just a heads up to you guys, it's Eric Lederbauer, she again, um so House Bill two forty-five, um they've got the language um documented for the two-year. Um recordings, um we know. Uh in order to be eligible to have the three three point two five percent multiplier or three times multiplier for Medicare Medicaid, so for billing rates to be increased. We're gonna have to sign a contract by the end of the year, um and what that includes also is we have to have to do standard reporting. On a monthly basis into that, if not, you become ineligible for that rate. Um in talking to the capillary chief. And the comp by check with the one who's kind of funding us on it, um it sounds very positive uh for the future, um they just wanna make sure that they're getting all the data in the next few years for that, so. Just to give you guys a heads up, if I get the nod by hopefully by next meeting, but if not, it'll be close to the end of the year, but we have to sign up by December thirty-first, so. I'll I'll bring that paperwork with you as soon as they get into the category.
Right, as soon as you get it, get it to John so that he can get it done, so I have time for reading ahead time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, so, alright, thank you, Penny. Well, okay.
Scott.
So question came up during last uh budget meeting about the transcription line, I was able to determine that does cover all of the transcription, so. We transcription is for the B O S and then the uh transcription is that does E D C, M D C and Z B A, so all that's coming out of that line. Um I'm also looking for approval from the board of selectmen, we received the uh invoice for the delivery of the new highway building. Materials on site. Uh out of that total, the total is two hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars. I'd like the board to permit a hundred and seventy-five thousand of earmarked ARPA funds, the last of the ARPA payment to come out of that. And the remain twenty-seven thousand five hundred to come out of the new highway building capital reserve fund.
So moved.
You're getting good at that.
That's a second question.
Second.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Diana, Diana, Laura.
Scott.
Thank you. Also, uh I'd like board approval to use the new municipal building capital reserve fund for the block work that Peter was talking about. Uh we were presented with the masonry invoice to fill in the holes that they're now cutting for ten thousand dollars.
So moved. Oh, second.
All in favor?
Kathy, I'm going out, Laura.
Scott, thank you. And you also have in your packet a letter from a resident, I believe it's in the form of an email. Home is requesting that a street light be put back in. That was apparently taken out at some point. You seen this yet?
I have not.
This is one I talked to you about on Reynolds between eight and ten, wow. But the way that process works is uh this resident tells me is that the town would have to request an ever source to have a light put back on, which we would pay for the electricity, obviously.
So the whole.
I was there, there was, I believe, an olderer style light. The resident of twenty-two years did not like the L E D. So they requested that the old light be there, new resident came in, said they didn't care, they took it away. Now the person next door thinks it's too dark over there and would like it put back in.
Okay. Do we have a estimated impact? I can't imagine this would be a vague killer instead of being an L E D.
Chad, you heard me, I think.
I don't know, I I mean for this then, but.
I think if I call or find out.
We we do have a capital reserve line for.
For light.
For a street light, so.
Yes, yeah, so we have used.
Yeah.
Nope, so this would be.
Armored?
Fault.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, that's our. Yes, isn't there outdoor lighting at the senior center at that end of the building? It should already be aligned.
He's indicating it.
He indicates that that light is not turned on, right? That they don't go on, maybe they don't have motion detection. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's me saying it doesn't. Senior centers parking lights don't go on, last I checked, it's always same.
Now, I know we had issues with the all of the lights at the senior center. Peter was able to determine it was a bad timer, that is going to be replaced, so that could be part of the issue.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good hire.
On that, I did talk to you.
Right on.
Mike Bashon was there this morning with me, we checked it out and I did convince him, I think.
Some part of us.
Both of us, yeah, and actually the new ones are pretty nice because they're all wireless, you know, we don't have to run. And we checked the wifi there and I logged on, so we can have it done wirelessly and you can actually go on your phone and sensitivity and stuff, so. He's trying to get the part, so maybe this is part of that, because they were they were out for a good week.
Yeah.
Until I turned them on full time.
That's probably right about the timing, he called.
Yeah.
Or.
That makes sense.
So once we get the parking lot lights, let's wait a little bit and see if it doesn't light up that area.
I mean.
Right.
I.
We can go ahead and do it.
Yeah, you can reach out anyways.
Hey, that is a busy area, if we didn't have the money, but we had the money. To me, it's a smaller flash house, it's a less broken pressure.
My friends.
I lost my mind, it's all in going, my best.
Or like, yeah, especially the termite hard.
I found it in the special room.
Oh, it's a napkin.
Yeah, it's a bunch of chairs over there, some. A bunch of chairs, metal one, no, office chairs, yes, because it's not on the conference room.
Until the next letter we get is somebody's thinking, well, you, yeah, street. I think, yeah. Exactly.
You also have uh. A memo here from the city management director, Mike Stark, we have updates of what's been going on. With the E N D. Wait, your attention to yet another letter from the resident, C D. In your packet. They are moving their business from eighty-five Allentown Road to sixty-eight School Street. And what I would need from the board is a vote of approval, so I can send a letter of that vote from the resident, and then if you give it to the leadership.
I'm good with this.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
I'm motioning a vote.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Kathy, I'm Diana, Laura.
Scott.
Thank you. And then finally. The. Municipal solid waste pilot program at the transfer station ended at the end of last month. And news just came to Chad and I that uh Puremore was purchased by Casella, so. So we are regrouping and going to with. Another idea of what to do next. My thought was to reach out to Puremore to see if they wanted to continue the program, but.
Yes.
Wasn't to be. That's all I have for tonight.
Um Chief, I've got a question for you, Mr. Guard. Guards Emergency Management. You folks had to go over to the senior center this week, uh was there burnt food on the stove on the second floor?
Um it was only on the second floor, like one in the morning, yeah.
But you had three four, three floors in there with smoke.
Yes.
I just I wondered, are there are there any type of plans, and I haven't talked to Mike Stark about our hazard mitig mitigation, are there any evacuation plans? A- a- and right after that, there was one in Massachusetts, the senior center.
Yeah.
And the firemen had to carry a whole lot of those folks out of the building, my concern was. Where do we take them?
So when we originally set up those works, they have a place of refuge on the first floor, um so during the winter hours, they all congregate in a pub. Uh and they stay there until it's confirmed that there's something that's like that. Right, so what happened with that is what is a contingency that's in our present place, which, you know, talking with with Mike, which we have to speak to again, is. This is our, was our first uh run of dealing with, oh, this could be something, um. So with that being said, we have um like four ambulances automatically dispatched, that's gonna be the run and fire. Um and on top of that is when we we have to contact or make an agreement with. Um like what happened in Concord that fired last year at this time is like a bus company, um so if permanent academy or jail transportation has buses, what they'll do. Those work has three buses out there, and they can fit a lot of people in there for heat and stuff like that. So but if it comes down to tax on the things that, you know, a lot of people. Then uh we're gonna have to contact a bus company to help truck them to either a shelter, which would be um. New Town Hall or it would be the Boys and Girls Club, um which is technically the shelter as we speak. Um so yes, those plans have to be replaced, and uh that's one of the things that Loring works on on a regular basis, he's been working on pre-planning of. That and the mill, should we have a large whole set at the mill where we have to evacuate everybody, so. Those would be taxing, it was, we had a good response, right? When we set up the run cars for that, we set it up that hooks it and camera come automatic with us for any activation at that in the mill, so we have crews to house itself. But that is a trap in the bucket of what we would actually need if something really happens, so. But yes, there's a plan.
I mean, what if it had been on the first floor, what if it had been in the kitchen?
Well, that's.
All those people to deal with.
Yeah, well, that's the the part where they have the kitchen actually, that's why when we went through into the fire ratings, and that's why we were so stringent with D H H S and and Loring and the state inspecting is. When there's fires, I notice those are compartmentalized, they're designed to automatically shut the doors, there's a two-hour rating fire door on every entrance that's in and out of the kitchen. Um every hallway, which we just had an issue with them, where they were propping doors open, which you can't do. Um those doors, as soon as the fire goes off, they automatically shut, and a lot of them have a two-hour fire rating for that first that purpose, which is evacuation, so. Um but with two members on duty, um and two come from us, three from Hootset, and whenever we can get out of emrock. Um that's five people to have to manage getting to that floor and make sure there's nothing spreading further than that, so.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Um other business.
Yep, um I'd like to make a motion to uh extend John Everett's contract uh three years beyond. The expiration of his current contract, which is August twenty-seventh, is that correct?
It's uh Jul- July.
Oh, July, okay, July twenty-seventh, anyway, the the uh this would be a three-year extension beyond your current contract. I think we should review his contract first as a board, I don't know that everybody's got a chance to look at that. And I do have some concerns typically when you are renewing a contract, that if we wait. One until the normal renewal time. We'd be looking at a perspective, maybe increase salary or any changes that either party wanted to have contract. And I'm just not sure why we wanna renew it now, it's. I don't see what problem we're trying to solve, it's like we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. Uh so I think we get my take on this, so John's been here for a year and three months. Um I think we have sufficient amount of history uh that demonstrates what he has dealt with. What he has brought to Town Hall, the stability that he's brought, the the uh, you know, he's. Done a really good job at getting this organized, that's a good place, um dealt with the people uh and the department heads, and um. I think there's sufficient data uh with a year and three months that I think it's fair that we. Extend his contract, we need him for way more than three years, he's already beyond a third through that that period, and. I believe extending it three years is uh is the right thing to do, I think we need his, we need his expertise, we need his uh his leadership here. Longer than just the three years that uh you know, that that existed upon prior. John, do you want to extend your contract out?
I'm flattered, thank you for making this offer, um the only thing I can say is I can't guarantee where I'll be in six years or five years. Um I don't have any plans immediately for any changes in my current employ. Other than that, um.
Yeah.
Um. Thank you.
I understand your briefing, but I just, I think it would be prudent for everybody to review that contract first and like. Maybe not just renew it, but if there were any changes either party. Desire, usually you do that during a renewal, and just superseding, stepping all over that and just renewing it. Um doesn't provide us a safety net, first of all, because John could still break the contract at at any time, um. I just, I always think it's good to prudent to review those things and make sure we're taking a look at all possible repercussions of such decisions. I'm I understand that, I think uh at this point, if we agree to extend his contract, I think if there's any details that come up, it could address those as time goes on and. But it's not untruly to see his contract, he hasn't even gone out through his contract, so we could. Take the next two weeks to review the contract and then discuss this, I don't see why we have to vote tonight. I also think it's a big discipline that would be nice to have a full board. If she makes it to a meeting, we. I think I think that John's done an amazing job, if he can come on, he came um to where we are now, the way that he did everything that has come up, um I. I was like, I don't mind doing both, I.
I can certainly share my contract if you folks want to review it. Still send that out.
John, you you fills a lot of holes that. Some of us need to learn, need to fill, so. Not sure that's for my town, I've four years.
I I was paid it, John, in this spirit. I see, I see.
Thank you. So, um. Resident for the town.
I agree, I'm not saying that his contract shouldn't be renewed, I just think it's hasty to do it in this fashion without proper review, and. I don't understand why we're skipping over standard procedure and previous practice, I don't. Normally, you're trying to solve a problem, I don't see any problem that needs solving, I just. Well, it's long term, I think forget, problem, uh should be. Should be covered out. Sometimes people try to event problems and they create more. Sometimes, sometimes not, um.
John's certainly free to move about the country. We'd like him.
Anybody.
We'd like to tell him that we like what what he's done and we'd like to keep him here, um. A little bit longer.
I mean, you've seen the contract, you've seen the contract, I mean, is there anything in the contract that? You know, would would warrant changing, I would.
Haven't seen it since last July.
Right, yes, I haven't either, but I do know, like I said, I know. Personally, if it was me, I would want to have the chance to go through that contract at the. If even if prior to the appropriate time to make sure that both parties are still in green and on all the charts, that's the time it gets changed. That's when we do that, and that's why the town writes these contracts for three years for a reason, there are protections for both parties, there's a reason that it's done that way. So to me, you were kind of shortchanging potentially, not saying you're doing an amazing job, I'm not saying that I wouldn't. Not saying you're doing an amazing job. I'm not saying that I wouldn't renew your contract or that I don't want you or appreciate what you're doing. But to me, we're giving up a kind of a safety net for the town. And I'm not sure why. There's no problem here that we're trying to address. I I can't imagine any board in the future not wanting to renew John's contract. And at that point in time, salaries may have risen. There may be other facets of responsibility that we want that person to take on or to not take on. We may make adjustments to that contract. And by doing this, we're just sealing everything in as it is today for no reason. Again, we're not solving anything. We're potentially creating problems. Um in an attempt to solve the problem, definitely.
I'm not sure.
To me, that's not prudent.
So I I'm not, this is not really to solve a problem. We don't have a problem here. What we'd like to do is lessen the chance that someone's going to come in and poach it.
Somebody could come in and poach him.
Absolutely.
Either way.
Right.
Like that's a good way to.
We can move around the country, right, but.
You have some option to continue active reviews. Um. Is there anything in your conference that you would change? Possibly?
To be honest, I I have looked at it.
Okay, alright. So I'm okay with let's take a look at the contract at the next meeting, we'll vote.
I will send it out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And I just think that's true. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So. Do I need to? I also.
We sent that? Yes.
Okay, I'll resend my motion regarding John's contract.
So recently I came across the buying network. And at our budget committee meetings, there was a lot of talk and kind of digging into our contracts with Verizon, um just different services that municipalities in general are contracting or subcontracting out. So what the buying network does is it enables nonprofits, municipalities from across the country can join into this school. It's free. There's no charge. And you get the discounts on say your cell phone coverage, whether it's Verizon, your internet service. They cover a whole plethora of things, some that may not apply to Allenstown, but a lot of them definitely would. Uh a lot of major cities have been signing up and droves and are saving fifteen to twenty percent of a lot of these costs. So I think it's something we should look into. It's the buying networks, let me see, networks or network. Thebuyingnetworks.net. So again, it's free to join. There's no obligation, no cost. I know that a lot of times you may check out estate contracts. But even like Jazz was saying, um with the street sign that we had to buy a month or two ago, they ended up finding substantial savings beyond what the state was offering. And then because state contract, big process, a lot of times, especially in this market, things are changing. It's so dynamic and moving so fast that they may be locked in to contract prices uh that are actually high. We could do better. And where this pools nationwide, it's not even just town departments coming together. It's not even just municipalities in Hampshire. It's across the nation. I think there's potential we have for some serious savings. So.
Look at you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Something rings off of who may you there. John, could you check and see if remembers? Didn't we not join just before John joined us? I know, I thought I thought you had mentioned, yeah.
Yeah, I I don't know if that was, that was it.
Hmm, but okay. It just something sounds.
Yeah.
This is just.
Of them that we were talking about. This is the first time I've heard of this one. I I hadn't realized it existed when I saw it, when I saw it. Well, that's what we need. Let's have something I will turn to.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So we started our holiday food and toy drive today, but flyers around town. Um it's online. Uh if anybody wants a flyer, put up anywhere we have them. Um donation pick uh donation spots are Allenstown Fire FD and Sully's also um offered to drop stuff off there. Um they're going to be donating some gift cards, um some of the bags to deliver some of the stuff. Uh we have a PDF form online and we're just asking for an address, not necessarily a name, if they want toys and food or just food or just toys. Um and if it's a boy, girl, ages, that kind of stuff. Um and then we are going to put those together and deliver them and we're kind of working with the town with the Giving Tree to see if we can't pull everything together. Both associations are donating money to fulfill the orders if we get too many. Um and yeah, but I just wanted to mention that so everybody knew and if we can get the word out, if we know somebody that needs it, it's just something I would love to get going for here. Yep, so.
But I guess you're welcome.
You folks may have seen the deed that we can release. Someone has, someone else is also pay their property taxes.
That's good.
Um I've only done a few of these. What use names?
You can, yes, because the town is actually deeding their property debt to the owner.
Okay. Um.
There are a lot of.
Is the amount on here? Do we need to? Does that even need to be stated?
No.
Okay. So then on the promotion at the town of Allenstown, deed the property located at nineteen Alvin F, map one on one, lot sixteen to David L. Simpson, Vince Sue A. Simpson. That's okay?
All in favor?
Yeah.
Joya, Laura.
Scott. Oh, it just occurred to me for them. Um so Kathleen made the motion. And who seconded?
Laura.
Laura. Just occurred to me, I'm going to have to have you electronic recite it tomorrow. Because it is a deed, it can only be signed by the people who are actually in Rome. I thought Trish was going to be here. So I will send the signature page out to you tomorrow. Sign electronic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We also had this in our packet.
Yes.
Here's such power.
Yeah.
Um John, you've ever spoken with this gentleman yet?
No, they just sent that in the mail as a proposal for the for uh for the town and the board consent.
Yeah, my first thought was our power committee because of the electric companies uh getting on board and and lowering their somewhat uh their kilowatt. We haven't had a meeting in a while. Um I'd like to talk to Michael Mara first. Mike knew these folks before he started and he's he's kept up communication as far as I know. But uh Chad, do you know anything about this?
Nope.
It has to do with net metering and we get payments if we're part of this group, if we use so many kilowatt hours. I did did this come through Deerfield at all, John?
It did the same, I'm the Swarage Deerfield. And what they're looking for is open land in a community. They set up a solar field and then they sell the power.
It sounds like they already have a solar field. They're not looking for.
Oh, this this might be different.
But we could do it on a deal.
Yeah, it looks like uh free money.
I'm gonna worry, be good. That you're gonna be jealous, so.
Yeah, they pretty they pretty much say they don't need anything from us. They just want to offer us savings.
Yeah, I'm good. Very good.
I I can.
Like five times, huh?
Yeah.
I can certainly invite them in uh to talk to you.
Oh, that could be. It sounds like the great deal. So but I'm just worried they're make, is there that?
I'll see what their availability is to come in and talk to you.
Okay.
Next step is the lease for Chad's new voter, pardon me, your old voter.
New one.
Was it brand new?
It's new.
Awesome.
Yep. It might be a twenty-four, but it's never been.
It doesn't look as big as vehicle. Would you say it has the same capacity?
Yeah, it's actually, it's a little bit lighter, but it's stronger. So it's uh, I don't know, different. New technology, I guess.
Way this is written, uh we already approved this, so I've signed where I had to sign, but there's one page here that needs an attestation. Um oh, and it has the payments thirty forty thousand, six hundred one dollars, ninety nine cents per year or five years in total, it's a hundred seventy-three thousand dollars ninety five cents. So it just, it needs one more board signature.
We have to agree for that solution.
That's right, that's right.
So another question out there. So if you look at the date of the document, number twenty eight, twenty twenty-five, and then you look at the yeah, the first line, which is map lease purchase agreement dated as of April fifteenth, two thousand thirteen?
That's the master. Yes, this is the current lease off of that.
Off of that, okay.
That I believe has one more board on it.
Okay, sorry.
That was part of the truck lease, I believe, as well. They use the same master lease.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
Yeah, it starts out with a these different folders. Master lease, master lease purchase agreement dated as of April fifteenth, two thousand thirteen between tax exempt leasing court the lessor town of Allenstown and less see in schedule number twenty-four. Uh thereto dated as of November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, that a what we call meeting of the government body of the less see is defined in the agreement held on December first, twenty twenty-five, the following resolution was introduced and adopted. Be resolved by the government body of less see as follows, determined in the need, the government body of less see is determined that a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of the equipment described on exhibit A, schedule number twenty-four dated as of November twentieth, twenty twenty-five to the master lease purchase agreement dated as of April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen between the town of Allenstown and tax exempt leasing court. Approval and authorization, the governing body of less see has determined that the agreement is scheduled substantially in the form presented to this meeting or in the best interest of the less see for the acquisition of such equipment and the government body hereby approves the entering into the agreement and scheduled by the lease less see and hereby designates and authorizes the following persons to execute and deliver the agreement schedule on less see's hat behalf with such changes thereto as such persons person persons deem appropriate and any related documents, including any escrow agreement necessary to the consternation of the transaction contemplated by the agreement schedule and step the authorized individual. Uh it it has my uh my name. It also has John's uh and it needs, it needs one more. Did I get enough of that in there, John? Um did I prepare it for the work? Only like thirty pages. Only few folks signing?
No, I I think it was just, I was yeah, we said one more. Oh, I'm one more.
Misunderstood.
It's just who's witnessing the resolution in front of you can sign. This took place by case one, the signature, the amounts of crap.
Just needed.
That was it?
Thank you. You know step is the agreement with central alarm monitoring. They will be, could be if I'm wrong, monitoring town buildings.
No, that is just for EBS. That's thirty mainstream. That's the new contract to have the fire system now being monitored by central alarm and also the burn system.
And it just, it just needs um one signature. You know, when I looked at this before, John, there's no a monetary amount on here.
It'll be an annual amount as part of RB Lewis. This is just the agreement to allow central alarm to be accompanied.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Mr. Green to the terms and.
Right. There. Do you want to finish that one first with a motion? And then second?
The motion, we accept the terms.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Kathleen, Drayna.
Thank you.
Here's a new basis.
So this is an agreement with a quote for the annual testing and inspection of all of our buildings. We used to have capital alarm and then that indicated capital alarm was bought out by a national company. It's no longer local. RB Lewis have been merging into overall coverage for the town. They'll do our annual inspection and testing. They'll do our monitoring, so it'll all be under one umbrella. And the prices are commensurately um that uh what we used to pay for capital alarm.
This is uh three thousand seven hundred eighty dollars. Where let's give list of the reasons there and what they will.
Second.
That's just to come in once a year, go through every building. Give us a detailed report of what needs to be upgraded or fixed or replaced.
Different things.
Yeah, that it is. The one you're holding right now is the annual monitoring. That way, if a security system goes off or a fire alarm system goes off, they will monitor that.
Hmm.
That is that one includes the one-time charge. When you change monitoring companies, the previous company takes out all their communication equipment, the cellular uh equipment in here that sends the signal. They will want that back. So RB Lewis will come in, remove all that, put their equipment in. So there is a one-time charge.
Four thousand, four thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
After that, there's an annual charge.
Annual cell type monitoring. For building two thousand one dollars, grand total of sixty-five hundred ten dollars.
Just this year.
Yes. Yes.
I need a motion to have RB Lewis take over the annual testing and inspection of all town buildings.
So.
Yeah.
Oh, second, sorry. Someone people.
Kathleen, Diana, Laura, and Scott.
That's it. Alright, then a motion. To have RB Lewis. Take over third-party off-site fire alarm system monitoring by a cellular network.
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Kathleen, Diana, Laura.
I was looking at me that way. This is timely because capital alarm is looking at our decision of more for next year. So this way I can get back to them the same way.
There's something that just needs our signature. This is for Lieutenant Bowen. It is out of office that was administered by. The police chief. True, we need a motion on this. We already approved this.
It's just a formality for those.
I'm just interested. I can hear that needs our signature. Meeting minutes have never set. Maybe we'll have any changes.
You want to make that as part of your consent calendar, classed?
Uh yeah, usually yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve. The meeting minutes from November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. To approve the twenty twenty five manifest, that's one eighty and one eighty two. And the town PR manifest dated November twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. So second.
All in favor?
Kathleen, Diana, Laura.
Scott. Um we have our communication here from Xfinity. Which we know is almost. Sort of. Yes, prices are going out.
I was just gonna say. I'll say that.
Yeah. Yeah, but. I don't think I saw any any new channels that getting that. Getting a lot of watching time being moved to premium channels, so. Know that they have the prices. You're gonna get the money from us one way or the other. Did you folks like this? I'm sorry. It's one of those companies that sets all of the consumer surplus out, credit card. Um. This. This John.
Is it implications for public hearing?
Pursuant to RSA twenty four colon nine dash C twenty four colon fourteen dash three. Twenty four. Colon twenty three and thirty three colon ten. There would be a public hearing for Merrimack County before the. County delegation at ten AM on Friday, the seventh of. Twenty twenty five, if you're at the courthouse. Second floor conference room, one sixty three North Main Street, Concord. Sure. They did uh. They have an agenda here, so as long as we've been made aware. Give that rush up there. Ready for non-public. Catherine, you hit, did you hit those items?
Okay.
Okay, so. Uh we all set for non-public grants. In lieu of the uh forward entry into the non-public section, according to the provision of RSA ninety one dash J colon three, part two, A. It's seven eleven B.
Uh, what's that? Kathleen, Diana, Laura.
Hey, hey, Peter?
Yes.
Can you be at the schools more at all?
Yes, six thirty. When it starts on heavy.
Okay, I just wanted to walk you.
Six thirty probably in the morning, I'm guessing.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay.